That's all right. I kind of thought it had to be some technical issue.
I sent her the paper.
Hmm.
For work?
Yeah. Isn't that where all work is done?
Two things, like, or one thing.
No, it's actually nice because it's actually the cheapest place to fly.
From here, for sure.
From almost anywhere.
Yeah. Maybe that's what we do. We subsidize and then we tax them. Just kidding. No. I'm sorry, I have one quick thing to look at.
Welcome back.
I'm almost ready, guys. Where, who is?
Nolan.
Oh, Nolan. Okay, we're a few minutes over, sorry.
Just fine.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called to order. May we have roll call, please? Yes?
Present. Here.
Here.
Here. First on our agenda, we will have a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, or next on our agenda, we have a public comment. Please be reminded that to limit the items of discussion to things that are not on the agenda further in the agenda and over which we have advisory power, controlled jurisdiction, and supervision. Please come on up and state your name and address.
Jay Kiefer, 325 South Main. I went to the museum last week and I was notified that a resident in either Livingston or Park County found a chest in the green boxes and he looked at it. And there were photographs of a Park County resident from World War II, newspaper clippings. And I gather that the museum will have a meeting next week and they'll probably be accepting it. And that got to me thinking about the staff on Bennett Street. I know they've got a busy job with the collection of garbage on their route. But if they, if something sort of says, you know what, I don't think this is an average, I don't think these items should be tossed away. I think the museum, I know the museum would appreciate a phone call to let us look at it before it gets lost to history forever. Thank you. There was an article, I believe it was, I could be off on last week or the week before, on the dealt with the scrapped photo image policy that Mr. Cardos announced. And I just sort of have to say that I was amazed that the city manager threw Lisa Lowey under the bus on there and said, I don't know anything about this. I didn't know anything. It makes me wonder, what kind of agreements has the city manager committed the city commission to with city staff creating a document that he was unaware of? Mr. Cardos seems to be following the line from Sergeant Schultz, I know nothing. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Next is our consent items, A, B, and C. Do I have a motion from the commission on consent items, A, B, and C, or any that you'd like pulled for discussion? Anyone?
I move we approve consent items, A, B, and C.
Second.
We have a motion by, maybe, and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
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 Four. Motion passes. Tonight, we have no proclamations. We have two scheduled public comments. Our first scheduled public comment is introduction of Alexis Van Harris Pernis. Anyone know the last name? Pernis, okay. The new conservation intern, and is she here? Okay.
I met her Saturday, but at the ribbon cutting.
All right, well, she's not here to introduce, but she is welcomed into our work for the city. So we look forward to working with her. Our second scheduled public comment is Mary Pease waging war with sewage presentation to Livingston City Commission. Come on up. Perfect. We also have a lot in here. Submitted. That's all right.
So first of all, thank you for letting me present to you, and I apologize when I was in Portland, I don't know how we got mis-scheduled, but we're here tonight. So I'm here to speak to you today as a city resident who is not well-served by her city. In a meeting with Shannon Holmes and Jay Porteen, my husband and I asked if either of them knew what happens after a sewage spill, and that is what residents are actually in for. And neither of them knew, so I wanted to ask among you, show of hands, do you know what happens to a resident when there's a sewage spill in their home or business? No one?
I know a little bit.
Okay, well, the visual aid there is to represent sewage. And I don't think that people are aware that wastewater contains viruses, bacteria, fungi, protozoa, pesticides, residuals of medications, diseases such as E. coli, leptrospirosis, salmonella, giardia, polio, and typhoid fever. And those are just common diseases that are found in city sewage. So what happens is the resident becomes a de facto sewage storage facility and a sewage processor. The city of Livingston does not help residents. When our building had 5,000 gallons of sewage in it, we were expected to get rid of that sewage. The city did not come with a pump truck, even though it came from the city. It's really difficult to be thrown into the deep end of sewage when you're a resident. You obviously don't know who to go to, where to go to. I called probably 10 different departments at the city trying to find out, what does one do? And no one could really help me. They did give me the name of, name and number for MMIA, but they said basically, you're responsible for finding a company to deal with this. Since there isn't a central repository of information for residents, you have to find a hazmat cleaning crew, which there really isn't only one in Livingston. You have to have hazmat gear before you can even enter your home. You shouldn't enter your home without high rubber boots, a particulate mask, eye protection, rubber gloves, and you shouldn't ever enter if you have an open wound anywhere in your body. But this, no one tells a resident this, they don't know this. You also have to find money to fund the cleaning crew. Insurance claims can take years, as you will see in our case. Cleaning companies charge 15% interest per annum. Home equity loans, you might be able to get one for 7% if you have a good credit score, that's not including loan initiation fees. And credit cards will charge you anywhere from 16 to 24%. So this is all this time when you're trying to clean and to replace your belongings, this is what a resident has to do. Also, if it occurs in your residence, you need temporary housing because many of the illnesses I just spoke of are airborne. And an electrician is required right away, immediately, because fire is common following a sewage spill. Sewage gets into the electrical outlets, causes a short, and it can also cause a fire. Resident is also supposed to find, in short term, a dumpster that will handle human waste, since the city doesn't help you pump out the sewage. And I don't know if any of you have any idea where you get any of this stuff, but it is not easy. Resident also has to have a vaccination for hepatitis A and hepatitis B before they enter their home. Because even if you don't have an open sore, you can get hep A and hep B just by breathing in or touching somebody who has sewage on them. You have to document every item that was in your home or business, and every item and how it was damaged. You have to have photos of each of these items, and you are expected to store all of these sewage-damaged items for later inspection by an insurance company. So you have to find a storage facility that allow you to bring sewage-stained items and store them there for years. And you also have records of past purchases, which may have been ruined in the sewage spill, so you can't prove your damages. So Livingston's sewage system is aging, we know that. Sewage spills are going to become more and more frequent, and I would encourage the city to be more responsive to residents and have a webpage or a handout to help guide them through the process. I really do not wish that anyone would go through what we went in this last year and two months. So finally, the 5,000 gallons of sewage in our building was not caused by an act of God, but rather by the inaction of men. So our lift station was caused because there was a battery that no one had read the brochures on that lift station to know that there was a battery backup. And Brian Leland, who is the expert who discovered it, I brought him here tonight in case you have any questions, because there are five systems like that in Livingston, five of these, and the same thing could happen. And I really, I encourage you not to have this happen to anyone else. Do you have any questions?
Is this ongoing litigation?
No, there's no litigation.
It's an insurance claim? So we can't speak on it until it's resolved, or we can't answer questions until it's resolved?
Okay, then I'll talk to you about that. MMIA has been the worst part of this whole thing. If you'd like a list of the number of times I have called and emailed and they have not responded. So we are now one year and two months and a few days past this, and they're still not even willing to pay for electricity or water that was used to clean up the spill, as if you could clean up a sewage spill without electricity or water. So I know that you guys have MMIA to protect yourself, but do you realize that they are not, there's no public oversight of them? In other words, I can't go to the insurance commission because they're their own entity. So as a resident, I have no power against them. I can't complain to any government agency other than you because you are their clients. So you've put us in a really terrible situation, and I don't know, are any of you aware of this? Are you aware that MMIA is not, in any way, has oversight anywhere? No.
No. No, not that.
So Jay can explain it, but they are their own entity. And it's like David and Goliath. We have no power. So do you have any questions for Brian? Because he came here today.
Do you have anything else that you'd like Brian to share with us?
Well, I think that you would be interested to understand how the lift station works and how important it is to have redundancies. I was not aware of that. And I think that you'll see on the bottom of the sheet that I gave you, there is a system, the SCADA system, that they could put into that station that would call out to a city employee, and they would know right away that that lift station was failing. And I, so you'll notice on the last line, last night, on October 14th, 2019, the lift station failed again. So we are facing again another sewage spill, and we haven't even settled the first sewage spill. So the cleaning cost alone for this was $33,000, and a SCADA system is $20,500. So it's up to you, but if it were my dollar, I don't understand how the city can pay for cleanup costs and not pay to fix the problem and make us go through this again and again and again to clean up sewage. So would you like to talk to Brian to understand how a SCADA works?
I think if you'd like Brian to help share in that information.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. My name's Brian Leland. I live in Bozeman. I'm an electrical contractor. I also have a degree in industrial and management engineering from MSU. So Mary called me up after, and I understand that this was, I believe, the second occurrence of sewage problem. She called me up because of the, she didn't buy the act of God thing. I didn't either. And as she mentioned, as it turns out, there was a backup battery that had not been changed since, I believe it was 1992, when the system was commissioned, essentially. Oddly, I found out from Batteries Plus, where the city bought a replacement battery for that lift station, that they actually bought four batteries. So evidently, there were three other systems out there that probably had batteries that were way out of date as well. So the issue comes down to reliability. I mean, when she initially called me, I told her, there's no way in the world any engineer would design a system like that where the failure of one fuse would cause sewage to back up in somebody's basement. So the battery is important, but that does not solve the issue here, because the system that you have does not have a battery fail alarm, which is the reason why that battery was able to go dead for 27 years without anybody knowing. Your smoke detectors in your house, you know how the battery goes dead and it starts to do a periodic chirp to let you know that that's the case? You don't have that with this lift station. So the new batteries that were put in, if one of them was a bad battery, you're not going to know until something happens, fuse failure, or motor burns out, or something, and sewage backs up on somebody else. In addition, when they changed out the battery, the new one that was installed, according to the folks at Batteries Plus, has a different terminal than the old one. And they said that it was very important that the new-sized terminal be put on the old wires in the installation. From what I understand, Mary was there when they changed them out, they did not change out those terminals. In addition, as an electrician, I can tell you, they need to have Deox compound to prevent oxidation, like you get on your car battery. Everybody knows how that can affect the battery operation. You have the same situation here with these lift stations. So even though you've got the new batteries in there, that doesn't get you the reliability piece that I think with the older equipment, you're really going to want to have. So I would certainly encourage seeing if the manufacturer has some type of an add-on for a low battery alert, or the telemetry system, you know, the call-out feature. I would highly encourage, when you look at those, that you get a system that is completely independent from all of the other equipment that you have. So it has its own float, it has all its own equipment, so that it's independent of what you've got. Because quite honestly, those fuses that blew that caused this thing the last time, we still don't know why those fuses blew. I mean, the ability for me to do any forensic work was blocked so that your normal electrical contractor for the city was going to handle all that stuff. I don't know if it was. But, and I can certainly attest to Mary's frustration, and quite honestly, some of the interactions with the city and the Public Works Department, I thought were less than professional, and I think probably looked at sustaining the act of God explanation. And God's too busy for this to happen two times in a row. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your information and coming to us, Mary. All right. Next on our agenda, we have one public, or two public hearings, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2082, an ordinance of the City Commission of Livingston, of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending ordinance 1999, an ordinance 2049, Chapter 9, Article 9, Section, I'm sorry, Article 4, Section 9-222 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing by Defining Electric Vehicle and Establishing Two, Reserved Two-Hour Parking Spaces for the Charging of Electric Vehicles on the North Side of West Clark Street, Adjacent to Neptune's Tap House, and Eatery Located at 232 South Main Street, and Establishing Penalty for Violations Thereup, Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So this is the second reading. We've already talked about the location and the definition of electric vehicle. It obviously is a change to ordinances, so once passed tonight, it'll still be a 30-day period before that actually goes into effect. Once it does, then we will be able to do enforcement at that point.
Thank you. Any public comment on ordinance number 2082? I have to open the public hearing, sorry. This public hearing on ordinance number 2082 is now open. Any public comment? This public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any questions or comments on ordinance number 2082?
I have one. Can we get green paint to paint the curb? I don't know. Are they designating a color for these type areas? You have blue for handicap, yellow for...
Yeah, they haven't before because it's really just paid parking.
Right.
So it won't be painted at all because it's still...
Still paid parking.
It's still paid parking. It's just that we've limited it to electric vehicles only.
Right, okay. I've just wondered if there's another way to...
Make it fun?
Make it fun and highlight it, I guess, yeah. Bring attention to it. That's all. Just silly a little bit, sorry.
We could paint some green trees in there, maybe.
Relief.
That's a good idea.
Any other commissioner comments? Questions?
I asked all mine last time.
Yeah, I feel like I did, too. Do I have a motion from the commission on ordinance number 2082?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2082.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Maybe. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
Four.
Yes.
Four. Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have ordinance number 2083, an ordinance of the City Commission of Livingston, of the City of Livingston, Montana. It's reading with an extra Livingston in there. Of its repealing Livingston's municipal code, Chapter 2, Article 9, I mean, foregiving, Section 2-47 through 2-53, entitled Departments. This is the second reading. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, ma'am chair. As you said, it's the second reading. We talked about this a little last time. The main purpose being to align the code with current practice and to eliminate some of the code that was placed in there. It's either redundant with state ordinances, or was probably a little too prescriptive in exactly how things should be ran. So I don't think there's anything specific in there that's significant. We talked about, obviously, acting department heads will still be acting department heads. We don't need an ordinance for that. Finance director is fairly well-defined. Public Works Director should be in charge of Public Works. The Law Department's still in charge of the law. Nepotism is still illegal, according to the state. And you may still suspend or remove me from office at any point. You don't need this section of code to do that. And that's pretty much all we're saying, is that this is either redundant or unnecessary. So we're going to pull it out, and it'll be part of our continued revamp of the code.
Any public comment on, sorry, have to open public hearing. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number 2083. Any public comment? This public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Same as before. Got all the information out last time.
No one? I guess I do have a question on, because I know this will happen. People will ask about it. When we take out Section 283, I mean, sorry, 53, suspension or removal from office, because that is something I know with a commission form of government, with city manager form of government, is possible. Why do we need, in your idea, ideas of having state law referenced, or the fact that we need to take it out of here in the sense, for what reason?
So this isn't, first of all, this isn't very specific in how it says it. It talks about may suspend or remove with the consent of a majority of the commission, any appointed officer. There used to be more officers in the city. Now, the only appointed officer in the city is me. And so that is already covered under the section on city managers. So the suspension and removal is already covered in a different section of our own code. And this used to be for other city officers that no longer exist. So it's now...
Finance officer, or...
Right. Well, I don't think finance was one of them, but I think there was a couple others. I think the attorney at one point was an officer of the city, and maybe the fire chief. There was a couple weird ones. But those changed over the years. So this code really is no longer applicable because it's for appointed officers only. It doesn't apply to elected officers. So you can still do what you will amongst yourselves as commissioners. And I'm already covered in the section on city managers. So this basically is redundant and unnecessary.
And all those other, and all those other people you named are...
I have the floor, guys, sorry. Yeah, and I think I wanted that clarification because I couldn't remember where it was, but I know it's there. This helps people to understand and to see the process and the steps for the commission slash city manager form of government. So thank you for clarifying it. All right, thank you. Anything else?
None of those people are appointed. The department heads aren't appointed anymore. They're all hired. So it's different.
Anything before we ask for a motion? I ask for a motion? Okay. Do I have a motion from the commission on ordinance number 2083?
I move we accept ordinance number 2083.
Second.
We have a motion by Maybe and a second by Newt's. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
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 Motion passes. Tonight, we have no ordinances. We have no, or one resolution, sorry. We have Resolution Number 4885, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing city manager to sign agreement with Courtney Llewellyn for the purpose of serving as acting city attorney until such time as formal appointment of a new city attorney is complete. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, ma'am chair. So this is part of the interim solution for city attorney. The, I guess, one of the benefits we currently have is since we have a outside counsel that's doing most of our prosecutions right now, most of the court can continue under that without any interruption. So we won't have to continue many cases. There may be some that we have to, depending on how they come up. But that will continue under that outside contract that currently exists. This contract just gives us the ability to have someone on retainer for the administrative law issues that may come up in the interim. So it's issues that you have questions, I have questions, departments have, will be covered by Ms. Llewellyn during that time. The, the current agreement is very similar to the one that she worked under the last time she was interim attorney, which was before Jay was hired. So this is, it will work basically the same way it did for any of you that were here at that time. The only difference is she probably will not be attending commission meetings. So if you have legal questions about agenda items, I would ask that you get them to me early and then I will get a legal opinion on them and bring it with me to the meeting. That's just a cost-saving measure because that's outside. Meetings in court are outside the, the included services with the contract. The contract itself is $8,500 per month. It's pretty much cost neutral as if we had the position filled. So it's not going to cost anything additional out of the budget unless we have a lot of additional hours for meetings or court. I don't see either one of those things happening. We tentatively plan, hope to have a higher date somewhere between 15 January and 1 February for a new attorney. So this will only be for a couple of months. But it will continue forward at that time. So if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Let's open it to public comment on Resolution Number 4885. Any public comment?
Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street. Does the public get a notice if some, if the city attorney resigns? And why or anything like that? It just happens and then there's a replacement set. And I don't, I don't, I don't know the process. Perhaps you can help.
Well, because the city attorney is hired within the city, the city's role of city manager form, we don't have any access to their personnel information. So if someone in any job, like as a principal, I couldn't share out why someone may quit a job or what's up or why, unless he chose to share that and wanted it shared. So we have, the city manager is his boss. We heard about it from the city manager when it came out, when he.
But the public doesn't have to have any kind of notice?
Not unless Jay wanted to share that.
Seems like if the commissioners get that information, should be available to become public. Is that not the case?
They don't get that information?
Oh.
What we got was just that he had chosen to resign and, and that's it.
Well, it seems like the public should be privy to that as well, that he chose to resign. I mean, anything, information you get should be available to the public, I would assume.
But again, like I said, with personnel issues, it's not ours to share. Anytime anyone quits, if someone.
Interesting.
You know, when the job's posted, most people know in any position that, oh, the change, there's change in the ranks.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if there's information that comes to commissioner, it should be like, we should just be, public should know. If someone says something to a commissioner, it should be privy to the public. Just a point, I think I'll do a little more research on that. Do you have a criterion for picking the next attorney?
Do you want to answer that, please?
Are there several that apply or?
The, the hiring process for city attorney is the same as the hiring process for any other position. There is a job description that will be posted along with the salary range to a number of HR sites looking for candidates. There'll be a open application period where candidates can apply.
But I mean, the temporary.
At the end of that, at the end of that application process, then the, there will be a hiring decision made and then the individual's hired at that point.
And I was just curious about the temporary position. Is there a same kind of criterion for hiring the temporary position?
The temporary position is a contract position, so it is the contract.
Just you write the contract and hire the person? And there's no criterion for you judging him, just somebody you like or have trust or?
It's really the same way we do all contracts. We find a contractor, we write a contract, we agree on a contract, and we move forward.
But usually there's a bid process.
Which is what this is tonight. We're voting on the contract.
Okay. But there was no bid process or other attorneys that were available to be hired or?
Not during usual interim kind of positions in anything because usually it's timeliness. So you're, it's just a filling in, in a, on a short-term, monthly basis, which I know in, in what I do, that's what we do sometimes. You just have to fill it in. It's like substitutes, long-term substitute. So that's really what, in any position, if we needed someone in another realm as well, while we're waiting for the process of hiring.
And state statute doesn't cover this at all?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no state requirement for interim attorney because it's a contract position. You can contract out, actually, some cities contract out their entire law department. They only have a contract attorney. There's no bidding, bid requirement. The dollar amount isn't, doesn't beat that threshold and that's a project requirement. It's not a personnel requirement. We probably do, oh, I don't know, we do several, probably at least a dozen contracts a year for different services. And this falls into the same category. It's just a great category.
When I first started with the city commission, the city attorney was under the city commission and it was a contractual position. We just paid by the hour to Bruce Becker at that point.
That's been before me. I know that we haven't been in that position.
Yeah.
Thank you, Patricia.
And is there any, I don't know if I have a chance to. I got here too late on the other issue about department heads. I guess I just can ask personally at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, you and I can talk.
Okay, thank you.
Since I make commissioner, this is the second time this has happened. It was handled exactly the same way the first time, where we lost the attorney and Courtney stepped in and did a good job. So there's precedent for what we're doing. But we weren't the ones that were involved in that as far as the commission goes. But this is the second time it's happened in my, in my experience.
Any other public comment? Commissioners, any questions, comments? I have a question, I guess. In, in Section 2, 2-2, on the referring to the fees. So we talked about a monthly, like salary. And then, but also you spoke of a lot of it already being covered by someone else. So what does this then? So could this be 10 hours a time, one hour to 50? Or how is that? As far as how that fee structure?
For the monthly fee?
Yeah.
So the monthly fee is to cover basically all of the administrative requirements. That will vary depending on the number of administrative issues we have. But that fee is good for however many hours that is.
Okay. And then you also said that we're not going to, going to have commission meeting attendance at this time, which I have to say I, I agree. Unless it's necessary. Sometimes it's not. And if it is, we can always put something, table something for consideration when we need legal advice. So I appreciate that we're not looking at, you know, that extra cost for something that I don't know is necessary at this moment. And sometimes it may be. Any other questions, you guys?
I guess I have comments. I appreciate, I think, we found out right, probably when the job was posted, I'm guessing, same time everyone else found out. And I appreciate no lag for coverage. I would be more concerned if there was no interim city attorney than, than moving quickly to make sure that we have legal representation for our city until somebody new is permanently hired. I would find it more concerning if we didn't have anyone at all. So, so thank you for your swift action on making sure there's somebody we can ask our legal questions to internally and, you know, among staff and administrative things, but also as commissioners.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion from the commission on Resolution Number 4885?
I make a motion, we pass Resolution 4885.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
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 Four. Motion passes. Next, we have our action items. We have two action items tonight. First action item is to discuss approve deny. Alex Evans, on behalf of Prospera Business Network, requesting Livingston City Commission authorize the city manager to sign a letter of support for Prospera's state grant application, allowing Prospera to continue to serve as our Regional Certified Regional Development Corporation or, or the CRDC. Mr. Cardes.
I'm going to pass it off and let Prospera speak.
All right, thank you for having me this evening. I am currently filling in for our executive director, who is away at a conference. I will make this very short and simple. We have been the Certified Regional Development Corporation for several years now in both Gallatin and Park Counties. Our services do not cost the county or the city any money. We are just simply seeking, or, excuse me, we are just seeking this letter on, on your behalf as requested by my director and to help push this forward. But I am happy to answer any questions or get the answers if you need them.
Before I open it to public comment, I do have one question or something I'd like you to explain. So would you explain to everyone exactly what it means to be a Certified Regional Development Corporation? And what, how, how does that apply to your work with our city and with the county and/or Gallatin County?
I will do my best. So the, the Certified Regional Development Corporations are established by the state and they require that you have at least two counties. That's my very basic understanding of the, the basic requirements. As far as what we do, we provide economic development support. Most of that is in form of business counseling, business trainings, loan funds. And then we also provide an economic profile for both counties, which is available every year. We also help with grant funding, mainly through Big Sky Trust Fund grants. So that's, I guess that is a synopsis. My, I can, I can go into a little more detail if you would like.
That was great. It's up to you, Alex. But I think that helps others to understand what Prospera does for us and their role. Thank you. Do we have any public comment on action item A?
Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar. I thought that Prospero is no longer administering our CDBG grants. Is that correct, Mr. Cardes?
So if you're talking about the CDBG revolving loan fund, that's correct.
Okay. And who is administering that at this point?
MSU extension is.
Okay, okay. So this doesn't, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Commissioners, any questions or comments for Alex?
I'll, I'll share some, I'll share a comment. It's quiet tonight. Some of my favorite reading about our community is the Prospero reports, to be honest. So, yeah, I think it's, their information is data-heavy and very informative. And I appreciate what they offer to our community.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion from the commission on action item A?
I make a motion, we approve action item A.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Newt's. Roll call, please. Yes?
Four.
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 Four. Our second action item tonight is to discuss scheduling venue for November Commissioner Listening Session. Should I just pass it on to you?
Sure. I wanted to have a definitive answer today, but I don't. But I would like to hold next one, second Saturday in November, on the 9th of November, at the Pickle Barrel. But I still need to get permission from Carla Pettit to publicly notice that. And I should have an answer tomorrow. And I can let that be known and we could get it on the website. And I'll see that it gets noticed in the paper that week. Now, whether or not I'll be able to make that one, I'm not sure yet because I get my hip replaced on Tuesday. So, but feeling good, then, yeah, I'll be there. But we'll take it from there. But I will definitely let everybody know what the venue is by tomorrow.
I can make that, so you don't have to worry. All right, any other comments, questions on that? I have one, and that is, I like the idea. And again, I said this last week or two meetings ago, but I like the idea of us being in various places, like at the farmer's market for where people are. And we had a lot of people coming up to us, talking, stating different opinions or asking questions and us directing people in, like to the right person or right resource. But I think this will be a nice change too, for people to maybe get a little breakfast. But I think this will be a nice change too for people to maybe get a little breakfast. Hopefully get a few more than just one or two people, but we will continue going to food resource, I'm sure, some of the time anyway.
Yeah, but I just feel that way, you know, people want a cup of coffee, something, you know, something to eat. It brings some customers into various businesses, you know, you can move it around and stuff like that, so. You know, we'll see what Carla says, but I've been there on Saturday mornings and it looks like they could use some people.
Yeah. And the time will be again at eight thirty?
I don't want to take up the middle of Saturday, anybody Saturday.
Sure, usually this is a comment, not so much a comment time because we're just planning, but go ahead. If you have something to say that relative to it.
Just thank you for having it in the business. It's really supportive of the businesses in the community. I appreciate. Also want to mention that I don't know if the commission's been well versed on the Hatch Act. But since we're in the middle of an election season, at no point can any sitting, sitting city commissioner or public official endorse any candidate. I just want to mention the Hatch Act. Thank you.
Patricia, you know, just the one thing is that didn't have to do with our action item. Okay? Thank you. All right, well, we're on to city manager comments.
And well under the time limit, so you can listen. I actually only have a couple of things for tonight. One is today we had our first meeting on the update to the strategic plan. So the staff's going to go through, we'll give you our recommendations. We'll get you our recommendations probably in December at some point for you to review and then in January, we can get together either as a work session or in a regular scheduled meeting, however you'd like to do it, to look to update the strategic plan. We'll give you updates on what's been accomplished, where we are and other items. And then if there's issues you'd like to remove or add, we can look at it at that point to kind of keep that document up to date and make it useful and something that we're using consistently and that you have reviewed and approved annually so that we're still making sure that it's what the commission was looking for. So that's item number one. Item number two, I just wanted to touch on the large retail establishment issue that had come out of the planning board. They talked about, I think they were calling it large format retail, but since that's the same acronym as Livingston Fire and Rescue, I have renamed it to large retail establishments. That is absolutely an issue that will be looked at during the growth policy process. I don't think it's probably a great idea to start that process without that public input first. We can go through the process of garnering the public input on that issue through the growth policy process and then look at that with the code rewrite, especially the land use rewrite that the growth policy will recommend. So I would recommend delaying that through the, so make sure that we actually have public input on it before we before we move forward with it. I know the planning board did get some public input on that and they've done a good job of trying to reach out, but I just think the the growth policy process is going to reach out to a lot more people. And so we can get a lot broader and wider view of it before we start actually writing code. In the meantime, if there's a concern over large retail establishments, I would just recommend a moratorium, pick a square footage, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand and say nothing that big can be built in Livingston and then we can remove it once we look at the code. I don't see that as an issue right now. There's really not any interest in any large retail establishments right now, but if it is a concern, that's certainly something the commission can do in the interim if you'd like to make sure that there's nothing that goes up.
Thank you, and we usually don't have a comment, but is there anything you want to add to it as the planning board rep? That we're missing?
No, I think I'd be, some of you have been working on large retail establishments for quite a while, so I would be curious if you have thoughts on as we go through our comments, if you have anything you wanted to share in regards to Michael's last remark about a moratorium, if that, you know. If you have any thoughts on that, I would be curious, but I don't have anything I would add.
I think there I mean, I do have concerns that we're not going to be in front of it, which I think the planning board has had the same concerns or it wouldn't be a major agenda item for multiple years. And so you know, I do think the public has had some comment along the way, but I think even more comment like as stated is important. And it's a big issue, I think, we have to think about because multiple cities have dealt with it. The fallout of them moving out in particular, but yeah, I think I think the planning board should discuss moratorium, the moratorium concept too. See what their thoughts are on that. So I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'd like more information as well.
So what would the process for that look like getting that, kicking that back to the planning board would?
Request the planning board to
Will you or?
Yeah, if you, if you request it as a commission, then I will just send that on to the planning board.
To the chair, okay.
To the chair.
Okay, that'd be great. It's a pretty
Before something comes to us and then it looks like, oh no, we don't want, you know, I'd rather have in place way ahead of time to cover ourselves, I think, but but yeah, have the planning board come up with it, like the square footage.
And the advantages, disadvantages of a moratorium?
I guess, yeah. I'm sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot or something. Thank you.
Anything else, Michael?
That is all I have.
City Commissioner, comments?
I just wanted to share with you, I went last week during that crazy weather to Bridger Bowl, had Global Sustainable Tourism Council training for two days and I went for two full days. And it was a really excellent event. It was, there were stakeholders all the way from Big Sky to Big Timber. Folks from Bozeman were there, Livingston, Park County, Big Sky, Big Timber. I don't think I'm missing any locations and there was everything from city, county governments to businesses, Chamber, the two ski resorts, university, private businesses, nonprofits. It was a really excellent cross section of our greater northern Yellowstone ecosystem stakeholders. And the topic itself was really interesting, this idea of like, how do we, how do we how do we as individual communities, but a greater connected community get the advantages of tourists for our local economies while also protecting our local communities and this ecosystem that we all share. So it was a really excellent program and there was a lot of great information and a lot of great people there. And I wouldn't be surprised if there's some momentum from across communities at large to keep working on this topic and thinking about how we can help each other with our shared goals. It was really great and I just wanted to share the overview. If you, any of you want more information, we can you know, we can figure out how to share that in a way that's transparent and on the up and up. So yeah, I just wanted to show that it was a really great experience and I was happy to be there. That's the only thing I, yeah, the only thing I had tonight. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention the ribbon cutting for the O Street Connector Trail. It was a very enthusiastic group there and it's a terrific, terrifically designed and laid out trail to connect the other side of the bridge with this side of the bridge. Very well done. I'll pass. I just wanted to thank Katie Weaver and the Leadership Program. Some of us were there to share in that. She's done a great job with that program since she's been at the Extension Service and it's good to see the kind of talent that we do have around. And does an excellent job, so I wanted to give her a heads up and thank her for that program. I pass.
I also attended the ribbon cutting for the O Street Connector. It was very well attended. I also would like to publicly thank the Bendon family for the easement on their property for the trail. Without that, would have been very costly to do without that, without that easement right away, so. Thank you. I yield.
I was going to say something about O Street Connector as well, but I unfortunately wasn't there because I was the scorekeeper of eighty volleyball games. It was one of the most stressful things I've ever done because they are like this. And then I got a call because of some fight because I'm a principal and then the next thing you know, I am scoring all incorrectly and it was, so I would rather have been at the trail having a good time. Volleyball's fun, but that was intense. I do want us to put in our minds and maybe as an action item in the next couple, if possible, before the snow flies, I would like to look at the ordinance and I know we're reviewing a lot of ordinances, but I think reviewing the snow removal ordinance, I don't know if there's a timeline, Michael, and where that's at in the review process. Probably down the line somewhere, you know. But it is a big problem that we deal with every winter and how do we as a city communicate? Is there, what are the avenues that we can take to help people clear their walk so it's safer? And I know there's commissioners here who walk a lot and kind of get to know where you know the snowbirds live or the VRBOs or the places that are not removing their own snow, although it's required by ordinance. So if we could put that on the agenda coming up, I would like to see that. Am I the only one interested in this item though?
Can I get clarification? Are you thinking like of updating or are you talking about like enforcement or what is your?
Enforcement, any updating that we need to look at for that ordinance. But I know enforcement's hard when you don't have enough staff and I know we're short still in the police department. I know our SRO is working more street time than, than he had or he was split. But I do know it's a problem and a safety problem that I'd like us to get in front of a little bit this year because it's been an issue every year I've been on the commission. Any thoughts on it, anyone?
Since we're talking about snow on sidewalks, does the city have any, like what's the jurisdiction for those two? I'm thinking about the two crossings from the north. The two pedestrian heavy crossings between the north side and downtown. How does that work since some of it's MRL and like I don't know how our ordinance is
Fifth Street Crossing?
Yeah, and then the underpass, I think, does that city that clears that?
The city clears that one? The city clears that one?
Because that one's usually better than the MRL, I think.
Yeah, I think MRL clears the Fifth Street Crossing, is that correct? Or do we do that one as well? Yeah. Right, so that's, MRL does Fifth Street, we do the underpass. Ish.
Well, until it gets plowed onto the sidewalk, which is, yeah, just the I guess I'm curious, most curious about like, when I think of ordinances and looking at updating and enforcement. I feel like every time we add something, we have to think about what we're taking time away from. And I do think that it's important, I do think it's important that people can still get around Livingston safely, regardless of the weather. And I'm also concerned about, I don't have a sense of how much time it takes for the city staff to look over ordinances and plan for enforcement. So I mean, with some of the other things happening, I'm wondering, I mean, is that like a a quick project or is it a long project? Do you have a sense, Michael, of?
I think the code is fairly straightforward. It's the enforcement that gets difficult. Just due to time because there's a lot of miles of sidewalk in Livingston. You could give, really it would take, if you put one person on it full time, it was probably several days worth of just checking, let alone enforcing after a snow event. And you can't start until twenty-four hours after the event, which is a little nebulous because it depends on when you decide it ends. So there's usually a thirty-six to forty-eight hour window in there to make sure that you're not ticketing people before, you know, to give them the actual twenty-four hours from the end of the event. But I mean, it's, the code itself isn't difficult and I'm not sure there's a lot we can do to change the code. It's always the enforcement that's the hard part.
I feel like we're not the only community this size that has this challenge that manages to enforce this type of code. Do, I wonder if you have any, any of your visionary creative solutions to this kind of a problem that the commission could be supportive of to help get us to the goal of
And I think that's why I'm asking to put it on as an action item, so we're in front of it this year because it truly for six years I've been on and six years we've talked about it at some point during the winter. And I think if we, we are moving towards, you know, ordinance rewrites and kind of reviews. But this one, we could maybe move forward just so it's before the winter at, during winter versus next summer so that we are addressing this issue. That's what I, I would like to see it on the agenda. Does anyone else want it, I guess?
I want it if it doesn't mean like we're putting back something that's a higher priority. Like I think right now the highest priority in my mind is this growth policy moving forward and I suspect that that will take some city staff time, potentially the same people that would work on an ordinance would be working on helping get this off the ground. So that's like the biggest thing on my mind, but I'm in agreement with you that there must be solutions we haven't figured out yet for.
Yeah, I just want us to be careful too that we're more than just a growth policy.
Yes.
And so we move everything to a growth policy, you know, and then we're missing out on some of the other business we have to take.
That's fair.
Or take care of.
Man, I'm sure. There was a program on from Bozeman the other day on the radio. One of my big pet fees is we have vacant homes, we have a lot of rentals and we don't get the sidewalks cleared. Bozeman now has a program. And it's good that the, the public doesn't get involved, you know, you got a neighbor that's not doing it. But they do have an enforcement program right now that if you don't do your sidewalk, the city will hire a contractor themselves and charge you a hefty bill and it adds to the tax bill. Goes right on a tax bill for the owner and I think that's a darn good program. I've got a neighbor that's been absent for eight years, nobody in the house and nothing happens. And I think there's something to do that if it gets reported and a contractor takes care of it, the billing goes on to taxes and that would get their attention, so. Something like that would be worth, worth discussing.
So is that saying you'd like to see it on an agenda?
Yeah.
In the future?
See, well, ordinance is yeah, every time we talk about an ordinance, you know, we've got something, but
Got to enforce it.
Got to enforce it.
Well, and that's part of the conversation of Well, and that's part of the conversation of, like, we get, you know, knowing that information and public understanding, the bigger picture of enforcement too helps this issue, so.
And I think the snow one is particularly challenging because during snow events is when everyone's the busiest, right? Like everyone's doing snow removal from streets. Uh, the city owns sidewalks, the officers are doing accidents and, you know, those kinds of things. So any extra capacity we usually have, we don't after a snow event because everyone's busy doing other snow event related issues. The bigger the snow event, the less capacity we have to go out and do sidewalk enforcement. So I think that's one of the challenges unique to snow removal.
So, um, let's, when it's timely and at all, even as a discussion item, so we can further delve into even discussing if we're not ready with the ordinance itself or ordinance review. But kind of starting the conversation when we can before a blizzard. Patrick Paul. We haven't had real blizzards here, like. We couldn't, not like North Dakota kind. The Canadian winds come. My last thing, which is my shout out, um, to those that make a difference in our community and/or someone or more than one person that make a difference. I have a shout out to two people who help organize something and have created something that I don't know if a lot of people know about. And that is the CSC, which is the Community, um, School Collaborative. And what it is, is two women, so Yvonne Rutger and Barbara Prager. Two retired, one's a doctor, one's a scientist. Retired women, uh, who decided they wanted to give back to students. And they started what we call our Cougar Fridays because, um, SGMS or Sleeping Giant Middle School is, are the Cougars. And they started a program where this last Friday, we had fifty volunteers, unpaid volunteers, they're unpaid as well. They volunteer their time and energy to helping students experience life and learning through it within their lives, um, other than in the classroom. And we had a great event. They are amazing, amazingly supportive of our community and of our kids. But what I think is really amazing is, you know, when you could retire and, you know, live a pretty sweet life in Livingston, Montana, they're choosing to give back in such a way that, uh, we're seeing huge results. I mean, they're managing, they have a person working and planning, but they managed to get, you know, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers over this past year. Thousands of tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars in support and just two people doing it just because they want to give back. And I think, and they're really fun, cool people as well and very kind. And if you ever have a chance to meet Yvonne or Barbara's, you'll see why they're so cool and, um, and how, how hardworking and how intensely devoted they are to our community. And I can only see them doing more, so not just with kids, but with others. So they are my shout out of the month. That's all from me. So do I have a motion from the?
So moved.
Commission on adjournment?
Second.
And everyone in favor?
Aye.
And everyone opposed? This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at seven forty-seven, six forty-seven, sorry.
You're just used to seven forty-seven.
I know.